Thank you. This evening I have two rather distinct ideas to share with you. One, I'm looking for positive vibes for a continued successful school year as we proceed from a very good beginning with our new curriculum. And secondly, a more serious area. Tomorrow happens to be September 11th. Let's remember it with solemn thinking. In the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joyce. Fire evacuation announcement. In case we have to evacuate this chamber, there are two exits. One immediate in front of me to your rear. Go down the stairs, out the double doors, onto the grassy area. Or the one to my left, your right. Go through those double doors, take an immediate left, go down the stairs and out into the parking lot. Kathy, could we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Feely.
Here.
Mr. Grady.
Here.
Mrs. Suzek. Mr. Serrard.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mrs. Rancourt.
Here.
Mr. Genitis. Mrs. LeBlanc.
Here.
Chairman Neville.
Here.
Okay. Item six, board guest, Dr. Schuman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight we have some guests from ERFC. Mr. Dubey is here and he's going to introduce the folks he brought with you and also share some of the accomplishments that ERFC has received and reward they've gotten as a result of the service they've provided for the students here in the community.
Come on up and...
Come on down.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us. My name's Larry Dubey, manager of operations for Educational Resources for Children. I'd like to introduce some of the students and our head teacher, Sarah Moriarty, of our JFK School Age Center, which takes place at JFK Middle School. We have Sam Betancourt and TJ Fontaine, who were a part of this program last year, and TJ is actually a part of it this year. Last year, we took part in the After School Matters Public Service Announcement Contest, which came through the After School Network. All middle school programs that are a part of the After School Network took part in this contest last year. The two PSAs that you're about to see, both Catch and Disappear, took second and third place at the annual competition. What they did was they were a part of the Studio Dynamics Digital Media Program, and they created their own scripts, storyboards, filmed and edited all their own projects using digital cameras and computer software in the after-school program. So we're going to show you two of the PSAs that they did, and the first one here is Catch.
Oh, hi there. My name's Cody. This is a PSA about what you should make in keep after-school programs, how they are in danger of being caught. Here are some of the things that we do here every day. Each day, students get help with their homework from adults. This improves their grades and critical thinking skills. ERFC's after-school programs also provide sports and other physical activities so students can exercise their bodies and their minds by providing activities that allow us to learn about traditional subjects done fun ways, like science. We even learn to cook, which is a skill that'll last a lifetime. As you can see, after-school programs are very fun. Now all part of the message is over. Now the ball's in the audience. Catch.
So that was the first one that they did, and I'd like to take a moment to let you know that all the students who were involved, it was Sam Betancourt, Kat Frenseka, Tori Chorvat, TJ Fontaine, and Cody Dang. Some of them couldn't be here tonight, but they were very pleased to hear about their winning. And they did win special prizes from the state as well.
Yup. Now the real work starts.
Exactly. Hi, I'm Tori.
And I'm Kat. We need to find a way to let adults know how much we care about something they're taking away from us.
After-school programs. ERFC's after-school programs really make a difference in kids' lives. They learn new skills, explore new technologies, get help with our homework that improves our grades, have fun, and even make friendships that can last a lifetime.
Hey, we still need to get our message out. I think we just did. After-school programs.
That's how we met.
They're just too important to disappear.
If Connecticut after-school programs matter to you, take action.
Kids have a place to go. After-school, go places.
So those were their PSAs, and like I said, they took second and third place at the state level with those, so they were very proud. We're very proud of them as well.
Good. Mr. Dubey, these are some of the ones that Dr. Schuman and I came down and we saw the awards session down at JFK last year, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yes.
And the kids did some of these things live, I think, at the time.
Yeah, at the time, this was all recorded. Like I said, they created their own scripts. At the time of the awards, the kids did not know which place they took, so that was a surprise when Dr. Schuman did give them their prizes. And yes, there was another piece to it where they had a little bit more talking that went with it, some more talking points that they reached.
Very good.
Any other questions for the kids?
Anybody have any comments for them? Dr. Schuman, we saw this, we saw the kids in action and it impressed us. We just want to invite them to come and show some of the things they do with the movie projector and the equipment that you folks have gotten, I think through a grant, if I'm not mistaken.
Yup, yeah, we've got numerous grants, one of them being the Digital Media Grant, which was able to give those kids that opportunity.
I know from experience, you put middle school kids on the stage, they're great, great little actors, so we appreciate the work that you've done. So anybody else have any questions? From Tina.
I'd just like to say, I think ERFC is an excellent program. I've seen it at Eli Whitney, and I'm so glad that we can offer that, and I think everybody that works there should be commended because everyone always looks happy and excited to get the kids there after school and for the next couple of hours and helping with their homework. So I think you guys do a great job.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other comments? Very good. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And thank the students especially.
Yes, thank you.
Item seven, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have several items. Our first is to welcome our student representatives from Enfield High School. A new representative, Christine Lutzick, is seated at the table with you, and the Enfield High alternate is Shelby Brennan, and she is seated here in the audience. Returning from Fermi High is Katie Salzgiver, who was with us last year, and I think she has cross-country this afternoon, and her alternate is Dan Salisbury, and I believe he is also an athlete and is tied up this afternoon, so they're not with us right at the moment, but they'll be coming. We had a meeting with them. Mr. Grady and I met with them last Friday. We had lunch. We went over all the particulars of being a representative, and we'd like to try something a little different this year with the student reps. We talked about it at the meeting, and we all thought it was a good idea, and that is that they're going to try to email to Kathy their updates on the Thursday before, so it comes out in your board packet, so you get it ahead of time, and I'm going to include it in the superintendent's report, and we're going to give them, and I'll mention it, but I'll give them an opportunity to report on it then. And we hope that last year, several times because of their academic responsibilities, the reps had to leave before we got to board comments and their comments, and so, you know, we have told them that school comes first, and that we don't expect them to hang around here much past 9:00, 9:30 on a board meeting night, so if we move their reports early on into the superintendent's report, then they'll be heard from early. You'll get the information before the weekend, so you can look at it, phrase your questions, and then if we do run late and they have to leave, you will have heard the student voices every week, and I think that's going to be a good way to get their voices on the table. We won't miss out what they have to share with us.
I think that's a great idea.
So we're going to, we'll try that and see how it goes, and they've agreed to try to email their stuff over to Kathy. Kathy's going to get their email addresses and they'll communicate. Second item is Rachel's Challenge. We're getting ready for a second year of Rachel's Challenge here in Enfield. There are some dates in there that things are going to be happening, September 16, September 17, September 18, and then the presentation in the evening for the community and the parents on September 24, and that is part of the 10A on your agenda this evening, whether you want to make some arrangements in your schedule so that you may wish to attend that and be present. Item C is a special request from the neighboring superintendent. Mrs. Baldwin from Suffield is doing her doctoral research on board perceptions on policy development, and what she'd like to do is send a survey to any interested board members in the state of Connecticut. She could have gotten your email addresses off the website, and she aware of that, but she didn't want to intrude. She wants to know that if, she's asking superintendents to ask their boards if you want to be bothered. If you wish to be a participant, she'll send you the survey. If not, she's not going to bother you. So if you're interested in receiving the survey, she said it'll take you about 10 to 15 minutes to complete and then send it back to her. It'll be part of her doctoral work at the University of Hartford. So anybody who's interested, if you can notify me or Kathy, and then we'll get your email addresses off to Mrs. Baldwin over in Suffield, and she'll be contacting you about completing her survey. It's completely optional. You don't have to do it if you don't wish to. The open house nights are all posted, and they're ready to go. The schools have, we've opened pretty well, and we'll be looking forward to the open house nights when we get to share and meet the students' parents and have them come into our schools. Again, we've scheduled several listen and learn sessions with students, with staff members, with administrators, with parents, and the town manager and I are going to host a joint luncheon at the community center. We'll do a town-wide listen and learn, so I invited him to see if he wanted to sit in. He thought it'd be a great idea, so we can talk about all kinds of town issues sometime. We're doing those in October, like we did last year. We're going around and meeting with lots of people. And the last item is not in your report, but it is at your places. You have a memo from me. This is as a request of a member through the chair for some information regarding the decision timelines the board utilized last year when deciding on the school security officers, as well as the consolidated high school mascot and colors. And what we've done, and I thank Mrs. Alkey for this, she's done a really wonderful job going back through the board minutes and agendas, and just pulling the important excerpts from the board minutes to show you the key decision points and how you made them and when you made them regarding both of those decisions. And so they're there, and if you have any questions, we certainly can answer them for you, but, and it does not include the work that the Security Committee did, meeting every Wednesday morning, that three members of the board, Mr. Neville, Mr. Grady, and Mr. Feely participated in. That work is not on those, on that document, but as we all know, that committee met faithfully every Wednesday morning for several months, and now it's meeting every other Wednesday as it continues its work on school security in our schools. If you have any questions, I'll entertain them.
Could you give us, could you get a list of those dates for the listen and learn out to the board, just so that we're aware of it?
Yes, we will make sure we get them out again. I think we emailed them once, but we can, we'll email the listen and learn dates out again?
Oh, it's in the packet? Okay.
It's in the packet.
My mistake then. I must have read the one without the additional things there. We can, we can get that for you. What's the question?
I guess, why are we, why are we getting the timeline for the POE decisions?
Let me throw in here, when Donna gets it, she may want to say a few comments during board member comments, but bottom line is twice, I think, in public sessions, folks have brought up the idea that we have spent more time, 92 days, I think, for the security stuff and only, for the colors, and only like 15 days or something for the security stuff. And it, the question is, well, the issue is it's a misrepresentation of the time. People certainly can say anything they want. I think Donna raised the question, and she said, you know, the facts are the facts. Let's just put the facts out there, and let's not just have it misrepresented there. And I was at one of the sessions, and I think Jen was at the same session with us when it was brought up, and I think, you know, open to discussion, it's great, but she just wanted to get the exact amount, and she asked through me to get it for this meeting, and I'm sure she'll have some comments about it when we get to the board comments. I know she's coming a little bit later.
I would just like to state then, I guess, for the record, that we never had any special meetings or executive sessions on the colors and the mascots, so it seemed like it was a longer process because we were only talking about it at our regular meetings, where the school security, there were a lot of executive sessions and meetings that weren't regular meetings, so that process, I think, appeared to move a little quicker because for a while we had, it seemed like a meeting once a week.
There was for several months, I think it was every Wednesday at 9:30. And by its very nature, and for the reason I think the board knows, they were done in an executive session, because some of the things that were being discussed. I think the issue isn't that they were being done, the issue was that the amount of time that was, that was specked out that we spent on that, and an order amount of time to pick the school colors and mascot versus the amount of time to deal with the security issue is just not an accurate assessment of what really happened, you know?
No, that's why I was saying, we only discuss the mascot and the colors at the regular meetings, which are twice a month, and then...
I guess, you know, and again, we didn't discuss, even putting out the amount of time we spent discussing the mascots, we put out to get more information. We weren't in the discussion. It was happening, they did a survey, they did a bunch of other kinds of things there, just like the security folks did as well. And I don't think any of us, any question, anybody asking a question or raising issue of how much time is there, but that's misrepresentation, and I think in Donna's mind and in my mind, of how it was used. Moving on to, are you finished with your comment? Okay. Moving on to audiences, is anybody here that would like to speak before the board? Okay, moving on to, there's no unfinished business, Dr. Schuman? New business.
Two items for new business. The first one is been placed on the agenda by the administration for your consideration. When we scheduled Rachel's Challenge, the presenters were only available to do the evening performance here in Enfield on September 24, and they went forward and booked that because we didn't want to miss out on the opportunity. That happens to be a Board of Education meeting night, so you have a conflict, and the question before you is, is it a conflict that you want to resolve by not holding your meeting on the 24th so that members can attend the Rachel's Challenge program, or is it something that you want to leave as a conflict, in which case board members would have to make a decision about where their whereabouts would be? We would expect that, as you know, I will not be here, and I think it would be appropriate for Mr. Dressik as deputy superintendent, while I'm not here, to be present at the Rachel's Challenge. I would be present at Rachel's Challenge if it was going to happen. We were there last year. But this is up to the board, and if the board chooses to meet, then Mr. Dressik would be here.
Okay, just as a matter of fact, we don't need to vote on whether we have it or not. We could just make that decision, because it's a conflict. But I'd asked Dr. Schuman to bring it here, and I think I called you guys with a message about it, just to sound you out on it. I had him look at the calendar. There's nothing pressing on that calendar that can't be done at the following meeting, and I know I for one, and I think several others, would like to be there, and these folks have been a key part of that, so I would recommend that we just postpone that. Either that or have a special meeting, which usually creates problems for us to try and get a special meeting together. So my suggestion would be, let's put off whatever is there, there are no guests, I think, or anything like that, that it can all be done at the next regular meeting of the board.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Because this appears as a line item on our agenda, does that require us to take a vote?
Chris is checking the policy right now.
I believe because it's a line item, and it says action, if any, we have to think we have to take a vote.
You're probably right. That was not, that was not our intent, to put it that way. We just wanted to make sure the board had a chance to discuss it, that's all.
It is a regular meeting, and it is posted with the town clerk, so I believe you do need to make a motion to cancel it.
Motion to cancel the regular September 24th Board of Ed meeting?
Made by Tina, seconded by Joyce. Any discussion? And please have a roll call.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rancourt?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Feely?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mr. Serrard?
Yes.
Chairman Neville?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to the next one, since I asked you to put this on here, I'll bring it up, and you feel free to chime in. As you know, first of all, welcome, Katie. Glad to have you back. I've been talking about getting a session, a retreat together, a workshop, whoever, to talk about goals for next year, and we also talked about Tina's suggestion several, maybe a month or two ago, that we kind of look at our, the process we did last year, and maybe do kind of a post-mortem on that, see what we did right, and talk about how we can improve in the following year. As we started to look at dates and tried to get things together, you know, I realized I was rushing it, okay? And that's never a good thing, and so we were talking about a way to kind of get this whole goal process out there, and Dr. Schuman had suggested, why don't we look at it as a two-year process rather than a one-year process? And the fact that we have elections coming up, 40 days, maybe, something like that, it's coming up pretty quick anyway, that would allow us, with the dates that he put on this calendar, to include the new board, which they should be, you know, there may be many members of the same board, but there certainly will be new members, include them in that process, have the presentation that we talked about, that Tina had talked about as part of that session, and then start to, using the goals as drafts that the administration put together as a basis for the conversation, have us come up with what we want to do over a two-year period, and then have objectives that will go through, that will be done each year to accomplish those goals, what will be meted out each particular year. So I think Dr. Schuman and Mr. Dressik came up with this process. It sounded good to me, so I thought I'd bring it here for discussion. What do you think?
Since you pointed out that the elections are coming up, I think if we do do this, the post-mortem prior to the election, I agree with that, I think that that would probably be a very necessary step, and prior to the next board taking a seat, but as far as planning two-year goal-setting for something that is in transition, we have no idea how the board is going to shape up, and I don't want to bind the next board to any decisions we may make. They may have different opinions. That's my only concern.
That's the point.
That's the point. We're not doing that. It's going to be, the new board will do that, so it'll be the new board's two-year goals. Which, when you look at the way we can talk about our terms and, you know, whether they should be staggered so we can get something done, plan over a long-term period, having a two-year goal and then having objectives, measurable objectives, on how we're going to get to those goals, I think is a worthy process. But that's the reason we came up with it. It's a good point, Tom. Looked very pensive there, Mr. Feely.
I agree with the timing of it. I think that it should involve the new board that's seated. I guess my question is the dynamic of the room. Will we be including the new curriculum directors? Will be included, who will be included from the school side and the administrative side?
It actually is totally up to us. My suggestion would be that we include all those people in there, so they be, they understand where we're coming from, okay? And we have a chance to question them about where they're coming from before we lock anything into goals. That's my suggestion. But certainly, it's the kind of the will of the board, who we bring into that. And I know that they've done some work this summer, if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Schuman, in terms of looking at what they think, things that we have to get done, some have a timeline to them, they have to be done within a certain amount of time. I know one of the things we talked about was technology, which we've all talked about for good, well over a year, that needs to be addressed, and there's a number of other things, so to me, that would be the starting point.
Right. I agree, and where I'm trying to formulate the thoughts, so forgive me if I ramble about it, the salient point I'm looking for is simply, these are the board's goals. We need input from the administration as to what they're trying to achieve and what we can look at in support of that, but at the same time, we may have a diventure of, or divestiture of goals with the administration that we may want to consider furthering, and I don't know if it would be appropriate to have a second meeting where it's board-only. Obviously, I would inter, I would...
No, no, this is an open discussion. Dr. Schuman?
I didn't hear the end of Mr. Dubey's comments.
Well, that it might be more appropriate after we have the meeting, the workshop combined with administration, and I'll just call it school leadership, that it might be appropriate for the board to also have our own workshop after that, because I would envision, at least if I were putting it together, that the first meeting would have a lot of information coming at us as to which direction you and your administration want to take to schools, and then we would couple that with what our board-specific goals are and see where they merge.
I would agree totally, and in terms of your board-specific goals, you might give us direction where you want us to take the district, and you might also make goals for yourselves as the members of the board and things that you want to do, so there'd be two areas the board may consider goals, so I think that'd be very valuable to do that.
Jen, did you have a comment?
We, like you said, didn't we have it last time, or in the morning, we had informational stuff, and then later on, we did the goals? Or are we talking about similar to the Johnson Memorial one, where we just threw things up there?
That was a full day of us, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We've never done it the same way, ever, okay? And I think, I think that's part of the problem, is we don't have a process.
We haven't come up with the best practice yet.
But we really haven't had measurable goals at all times, okay? We've had, we've had goal statements that really weren't clearly measurable. We didn't have metrics in there to say, did we accomplish it or not? And I think this year, we did have measurable goals, and we did assess them, and Dr. Schuman reported back on where we are, and I think he reported some next steps that they think they should, that we should take. And it's certainly up to the board to make a decision, you know, which steps they want to take, which steps they think they can afford to take, and so on. I look at it, there's probably going to be a combination of things that they're going to recommend to us, there may be some things that they're just going to do as goals for themselves, and then there may be some goals that we do. I would leave it open that we can have one, or two, or three meetings if we needed to do that, but I think we want to get involved in the process. Goal-setting, if we don't have a roadmap where we're going, we're not getting there. And I think that's, that's why I wanted to bring it to the whole board. So this is just for discussion, but is there a consensus that this is, if we lock the dates in now, then we have a better chance of being able to get us all there, and so that's what we were trying to do. Okay?
Do you have a date for the meeting before the election?
The, the meeting for, that, that Tina talked about?
Yeah.
A post-mortem that we talked about?
Yeah, the post-mortem, yeah.
My favorite. I think that was my turn, was that yours? It was yours, I'm sorry. I won't take credit for that.
That's what we call it in life insurance world, that's what we call it.
In life insurance, that's what you call after a major event, quarter, close, year end, you call it a post-mortem.
Yeah, well, we've done that too, so that's okay. We can have that at any time. I think it would be, I wonder if we want to have it after a meeting, or beginning of a meeting, earlier meeting, or something like that, dedicate 45 minutes or an hour to that and just have it. It could be any meeting in October. We have two meetings in October, and I believe one meeting in October, we have to have that, it's going to have superintendent's evaluation on it, if I'm not mistaken, based on our last meeting. The last meeting in October, we agreed to. So would you like, which would be your draw, is we'll put it on the agenda?
I'm not going to be there October 8th because it's Holy Family Confirmation.
I understand. Why don't we do it, why don't we do it in that last, that last meeting in October? Put that on the agenda, Dr. Schuman?
Could be.
Could be.
22nd.
Yeah, so we'll add that to that agenda.
Is that part of the actual meeting or prior?
I'd almost like, almost in a workshop format. It's, I think, you were talking about this, it's more easygoing if we can just, maybe we could have a workshop down in the Enfield Room and prior to this meeting.
Prior to, yeah.
If the board's comfortable with that.
Yeah. So that throws away the idea of a September 28th meeting on a Saturday morning?
Yes. For the reasons, and actually, that was part of a longer discussion I had after I talked to you, Joyce. Okay? Sounds good.
6:00 PM or 5:30?
Six...
5:30 served it. 5:30, yeah.
5:30, I'll serve dinner.
Okay. Six.
Five-thirty, yeah.
Five-thirty, yes.
Okay.
Can you get Mark Arnold to make us dinner, Ken?
Put something together, because people are coming right from work here, you know, and, yeah.
If we can't get the Enfield room, couldn't we just get the Thompsonville room?
Thompsonville would be way too tight.
That's a small, small room. That's a tiny room.
That gets real crowded with so many people.
Yeah. You're right. You're absolutely right.
We could use the council chambers here, I suppose.
Yeah, that'd be fine. The info room would be the preferred place. And if you can get some kind of light things that folks eat, that would be better. I understand. I understand. We'll figure something out.
We'll have a picnic.
Yeah.
The Enfield room will be open.
We'll meet at Subway.
Okay.
Mayor.
There you go. Panera.
That's a good place.
One of the player places.
Okay. So the consensus is that we're going to have that meeting on the twenty-second?
October twenty-second.
October twenty-second, we're going to have an hour meeting, oh, at five-thirty, and you're going to provide some light fare for us, and we'll do our post-mortem. And then we'll come back and do the regular meeting. Okay? Item eleven, board committee reports. I know yours was canceled. Were there any curriculum, any meetings, or anything since the last meeting? Okay. Board member comments. Now, maybe I can start with our student reps, if they have any comments here. No? Okay. Jen?
Let's see. Last Friday was Eli Whitney's back-to-school picnic, and it was a wonderful night. It was beautiful weather, a lot of people attended, a lot of staff was there, which was great. The kids loved seeing the staff out. Wednesday, the eighteenth, will be the open house at Eli Whitney. Let's see, what else? And then this coming weekend, the fifteenth, on Sunday, is Family Day at the Town Green. So they'll have a bunch of different activities. The different PTOs and different school organizations will have fundraisers and selling food and items like cotton candy, pizza, popcorn, snacks. And then they'll have bingo, mini golf, inflatables. FE will be doing their cleat-to-be tag sale, so you can come. And they also, on their FE web Facebook page, have a picture of their inventory, and they have everything from like, skis to ice skates, to field hockey stuff, and soccer cleats, everything.
Musical instruments?
Yes, and they have musical instruments, too. And then, let's see, Enfield Police will be doing child ID fingerprinting and checking the car seats. So it should be a good day. They usually don't have soccer games on Saturday, or Sunday, and we don't have baseball either, so hopefully, the weather's nice, and you can go out there this weekend. So I think that's it.
Sounds good. Thank you. Ms. Zoll?
I'll first reiterate the Family Day. It is something that is very entertaining, enjoyable, and the PTOs come up with some interesting things. In addition to that, as I was going through a variety of my emails, I found one referring to the test, a report, actually, Trends in International Mathematics and Science Study, which I always think of as TIMSS, because its letters are T-I-M-S-S. It's a report on math and science knowledge and skills of fourth and eighth graders around the world. And this is a slightly different outlook on the results, where our nation has been criticized within itself because of our supposedly low scores. If the state of Massachusetts, for example, were a country, its eighth graders would rank second in the world in science, behind only Singapore, and sixth in mathematics. Not only that, but according to the report, North Carolina was a top scorer in the fourth grade math exam. Massachusetts, Minnesota, North Carolina, and Indiana were top scorers on the eighth grade math exam. And there were other high scorers on the eighth grade science. And the United States as a whole scored above the international average. So in spite of what we're being told about our math and science, we still have some students who know what they're doing.
Well stated. Tom?
Nothing.
Vinnie?
Nothing.
Kevin?
First, welcome to our new student reps. And I hope all the students are enjoying their new schools, or their new classrooms within the same schools, beginning of another fun-filled year. But again, to reiterate what Joyce said earlier about nine-eleven's a solemn day, and we should remember it.
Thank you. Tina?
Sure. I have a couple of things. Starting tomorrow night at six-thirty, at JFK is the sixth grade open house, where you can go meet your child's team of teachers. And on Thursday night at six-thirty, at JFK, is the seventh grade. The seventh grade parents can go. It's going to be in the auditorium. Also, I will be at JFK for the day on Wednesday, September eighteenth, for the Rachel's Challenge chain reaction programs. I'm looking forward to that. I'll be there all day, and I can't wait to learn even more about Rachel's Challenge. Also, I have a few things about Family Day. It's from eleven-thirty to four on Sunday. Entertainment starts at eleven-forty-five with dancing and games with DJ John Ross. There's jugglers, there's going to be an Enfield Police K-9 demo. The Enfield Idol winners are going to perform. Entertainment ends at three. There's a soccer shootout, a free 1K kids' fun run, and a sidewalk chalk art contest, all on Sunday. And I just want to say, we had a smooth beginning of school, and I hope everyone else has all their kinks ironed out, if there were any, and hopefully, the kids have a safe and happy school year.
Very good. Thank you. Katie?
First of all, thank you for having me back on the board. It's good to be back up here again. And I'd like to welcome everyone back to Fermi, new students and, you know, returning students. We had a good first week of school. Everything went smoothly, including our picture day on Friday. As always, each of the four grades was staggered through the four first periods of the day. And along with an assembly for, you know, each of the grades pertaining to school rules and such. Yesterday was the first girls' swim team meet. And today, basically, all the sports, soccer, field hockey, volleyball, and of course, cross-country, we all had our first games, or meets, or matches. The only one, the only sport not on here is football, and I can't say I'm sure when they're going to have their first game, so.
Very good. Thank you, Katie. I've got a couple of things here. One, along with Tina, I'll be at JFK for Rachel's Challenge on the eighteenth, and I'm looking forward to it. I think you folks know that Dr. Schuman and I, and the mayor, and the town manager have been involved in a business forum. It's been going on for several years. And one of the things we did last year was to do a survey of people's interest in helping us get internships, some possibly paid or unpaid, for students and staff to get out into the business community. And there was a willingness to do that, and we're having our first business forum, I think, Dr. Schuman, is the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh, yes.
Are you back by then? Or you're?
Yes, I will.
Okay. And so we're going to be looking to get more teachers and more kids out into the real world to see what goes on. And we have, the business community in Enfield's been very, very open to working with us on this, and I think it's something we should take advantage of. So we'll keep you updated on that. Secondly, something came up at a meeting, but, you know, they do those quarterly meetings, the town government does it, I think the mayor does it, and it was out of Nathan Hale not too long ago. And it came up at another point to us as well. And I just want to clarify something. At that meeting, it was said that, as you all know, there's a petition going around regarding the school security officers. And at that meeting, it was brought up that teachers were not allowed, and they were being threatened with their job if they were to sign that petition. So I went to the person who made it, because obviously, one, it's against the law, two, we would never do something like that. If we found out something like that was going on, we would pounce on it, because, you know, it is a democracy, and folks have a right to do that. I asked the person to get to me the names, or get to Dr. Schuman, and he would investigate it. I haven't heard anything back yet, nor have I gotten anybody's name that said that it had actually happened to them. So I'm just concerned. I don't like those kinds of rumors out there. And it's not something that we would do, and it's something that we would be very, very aggressively go after. So if there is something that's happened there, I'd like to know about it, or get to Dr. Schuman, you have to come to me, so that we can reinforce that. There is sometimes a confusion between the policies that teachers have regarding political activity. And I know the board knows that policy. And teachers, or any school employees, can't actively support or push for a candidate within the school during the school day. Outside the school day, they can. They can go and work for them, they can do whatever they want to do, but they can't do it in that closed environment in the school. And I think maybe perhaps that, there's some confusion there. But I just wanted to clarify that. And finally, you know, I think you folks know Dr. Schuman is heading off to London tomorrow, correct? To take part in a triathlon? He's been invited there, and I wish you well, okay? And I know you've been practicing religiously to get ready for it, but you may want to just share a little bit with them about what's going to happen in the next couple of days for you.
Yeah, the actual event opens tomorrow, on Thursday. The races are Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. There'll be athletes, amateur athletes, para triathlons, handicap folks who will be competing, and there'll be the pros from all over the world will be there as well. And the events will start eight o'clock on Thursday morning, and they'll run through till about middle of the afternoon on Sunday. And it closes with the elite men competing in London. It's on the same course that the 2012 Olympics were on last year, so it's kind of a neat place. The swims are all in Hyde Park, and the bike course goes out around Buckingham Palace and comes back, and then the runs go out through the center of London. So it should be a pretty interesting time. They're expecting over 5,000 competitors there. And I'll be racing on Friday morning and Sunday morning. So we'll be traveling over tomorrow. We get there about seven o'clock tomorrow night, their time, and then put the bike together. Bike is in a box right now, so you have to take it out of the box, put it all together, and get it ready to ride on the first thing on Friday morning. So it's pretty exciting. I'm looking forward to going. I want to get through, as you've all experienced a day of travel, you know what that's like. That's more, I think when I get to the race site, I'll be fine. It's dealing with all the travel, and the airports, and security, and of course, traveling on nine-eleven, there'll be heightened security, and when you're carrying a big box around with you, I'm sure that they're going to, people are going to have an interest in what's in it. So I'll probably be opening it up a couple of times tomorrow, as I travel across the country.
But you're going, representing the U.S., and you had to qualify to get into this, correctly?
Correct. You qualify at the national championships a year in advance. So last year, the national champions were held in Burlington, Vermont, and that's where I qualified. And so I'll be a member of Team USA. I've received a Team USA uniform. We all have to wear the same uniforms when we get over there. It's kind of high-tech carbon fiber material, which is very interesting stuff. I'll show it to you when I get back, but it's different than anything I've ever felt before, but it's kind of weird stuff. But it's supposed to be the best, and, you know, that's what the team has provided for us, and so we'll be over there competing in the red, white, and blue all week.
It sounds great. I mean, most of us go to vacation, we go to the beach. He's in a triathlon across the ocean, and, you know, we wish you well, and we think you'll represent yourself and the country and Enfield well. You're also going to Denmark, to the Lego folks as well, right?
Correct. Yeah, when we, when I was explaining this to the Lego folks, they said, well, gee, you're just, you know, an hour plane flight from Denmark, you need to come see the facility. So they've invited me over. They've put us up in, my wife and I are both going to go. They're going to put us up in the hotel, which is right next to their facility. And what we'll be visiting, they do have their Legoland there, which is their park, but that will do on Sunday. But on Monday and Tuesday, they've got a full day of events for us, including a stop at what they call their Idea House, which is where they do all their creative inventing. We'll be going and touring the factory. We'll be meeting for lunch with some of the Lego executives. We'll be meeting with different groups of individuals who are involved with their program in South Africa on Monday afternoon. Monday evening, we're meeting with the local, their Board of Education, their municipal folks. And then Tuesday, we'll spend the whole day in the schools.